Do we have Irene yet?
No.
We have Pam there.
Yep. Okay, I'm going live on YouTube. It'll be about 20 seconds.
Good evening, Pam.
I had had a bit of trouble, had to update everything. Anyway.
We are live.
Thank you. I'm just waiting to see if, um, we do not have our delegate delegation yet, do we not? Ashley?
We do have Irene, yes.
Oh, she on, okay, so Irene is in the other room right now.
Okay, as long as she's ready to go, all right, so I'm gonna open the meeting. Welcome, everybody. Due to COVID-19 and recommendations by the region of Waterloo Public Health to exercise social distancing, the Township Administration Office is currently closed to the public until Monday, June 15, 2020. Township council meetings are being held electronically. Members of the public may watch and/or participate in this open meeting electronically using any of them following methods. Watch livestream. Under the video column, click on the link for the meeting date that you wish to watch. You do not need a YouTube account to watch the livestream. You cannot directly participate in the meeting via the livestream, as this is for viewing only. Members of the public interested in participating in an agenda item or attending as an observer must submit the request in writing to the Clerk's Division at clerk@northdunkfries.ca before 6:00 PM on June 7. Excuse me. Those requesting to speak to an item must indicate which report you wish to speak to. A link and/or telephone number will be provided to those who register before the registration deadline. And number three, if you would like to comment on a particular item, but are not available to attend the meeting virtually, members of the public are invited to submit written comments at clerk@northdunkfries.ca, which will be provided to the mayor and councillors prior to the meeting and will form part of the public record. And I'd like to have your roll call called, please. Excuse me. Ashley, you're gonna call the roll call?
Certainly, Mayor Foxton.
Present.
Counselor Rolloman.
Present.
Counselor Ossner.
Present.
Counselor McCreary.
Present.
Counselor Gillespie.
Present.
And then also their staff as well, Andrew McNeely.
Present.
Shelley Steddel.
Present.
Robert Chance.
Present.
And then we also have Cynthia and Denise are in the back and then also myself attending.
Thank you, and we have a call for the approval of the agenda. And that is moved by Counselor Gillespie and seconded by Counselor Rolloman. And you want to read that out, please?
Certainly, that council adopted the June 8, 2020 Committee of the Whole Agenda as presented with the following addendums. One, add item 6.4, report number REC-07-2020, Request for Proposal Award, ND-RFP-13-2020 for Victoria Park gazebo rehabilitation. Two, add item 6.5, report number REC-08-2020, Proposed Adjusted Rate Structure, North Empreys Sports Camp 2020 Summer Camp Experience. And three, add item 6.6, report number PW-08-2020, Morrison Road Project, Branchton Road to Highway 8. And Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Rolloman?
Yes.
Counselor Ossner?
Are you unmuted?
Sorry, yes.
Counselor McCreary?
Yes.
And Counselor Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried.
Thank you. Are there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in general nature there? Seeing none. Financial function area. Clerk will advise whether any requests received or written submissions from the public for any items, so you all inform us now.
So, yes, I can confirm that we've received no public written submissions and there's been no, but no individual has registered either to speak to this item.
Okay, any members of council wish to speak to this item or any of the reports? And if so, those items are removed from the consent agenda.
Sue, I'm sorry, I had a little battery problem and, oops, I still have a battery problem. What item were we on here?
So we're deciding which ones to pull to speak on. Now, we're aware that, I believe, 6.4 is going to be touched with by not only Irene Adney, but also CEO McNeely would like to make a comment on 6.4.
So, right now, Mayor Foxton, we're under the finance function area, so it's just report, there's 4.1, so there's the one report.
Right. Which is the Williston Street New Old Storm Drain. Anyone wish to speak on that? Seeing no one speaking on that, we have the motion moved by Counselor McCreary and seconded by Counselor Ossner. And you want to read that, please?
Yeah. That the Committee of the Whole recommend the following item be approved as presented as outlined in the staff report listed in the finance function area. And that's report number FIN-13-2020, Williston Newell STS Storm Drain Project Updated Finance Requesting. And with the Chair's permission, it's as presented in the staff report. Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Rolloman?
Yes.
Counselor Ossner?
Yes.
Counselor McCreary?
Yes.
And Counselor Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried.
Thank you.
Mayor Foxton?
Yes.
I'm going to excuse myself for one second. I need to get a cord long enough to get my plug-in for the, I don't know why it didn't charge, it was plugged in all night. I'll be right back.
Wait two seconds and I'm gonna ask you first if there is any item you want pulled under the community services function?
Sure, as long as I don't go dead, because.
Yeah, and then we'll let you go as we sort that out, go ahead.
Yeah, I just.
Do you have anything you want to report, pulled?
I wouldn't mind talking on the Safe Spaces program. Are you talking about community services?
Yes.
Yeah, 6.2.
6.2, so 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4 are also going to be pulled by Irene Adney. So 6.2 is also Derek, and Margaret, you have your hand up.
Four.
6.4. And Counselor Gillespie?
6.2.
6.2. And Counselor Rolloman?
6.1, 6.2, and 6.4.
So, the ones that can move forward, if I have this correct, is 6.3, 6.5, and 6.6. Is that correct? Does anybody have any comments on 6.3, 5, and 6? Seeing none, we'll wait for Counselor Ossner to come back. Are these? Do we have these laid out as separate resolutions?
Do, yes, the first one is to approve, present all of them, and then we would adjust it accordingly, and then following that, it's each one in, one by one.
Okay, because I have the resolution here that has them all on it. So I don't see the individual ones. Does anyone?
Yeah, if you flip forward.
Back.
Hi, Derek.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right, Derek, I'm just trying to get this resolution worked out. Well, we are going to pass, as I stated before, 6.1, 6.3, and 6.?
No, 6.3, 6.5, and 6.6 are as presented. So that motion is moved by Counselor Rolloman and seconded by Counselor Gillespie, that the Committee of the Whole recommend the following items be approved as presented as outlined in the staff reports listed in the community services function area. And that was item 6.3, report number PW-07-2020, item 6.5, report number REC-08-2020, and item 6.6, report number PW-08-2020. Mayor Foxton, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
Counselor Rolloman?
Yes.
Counselor Ossner?
Yes.
Counselor McCreary?
Yes.
And Counselor Gillespie?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
So now we discuss, start the discussion on 6.1? Victoria Park? We have Ms. Adney, she is speaking on?
She's speaking on 6.1, yes.
So, Ms. Adney, you're first.
Thank you. My question is, there was some correspondence that came in with this report. It was from Chris Wood, the letter about recommending a combined facility. I didn't see that there was a recommendation to act on the correspondence. And my question is, will there be a recommendation or will that suggestion be acted upon?
Would anybody? And you also are muted.
So, thank you, Mayor Foxton. We have pushed that item of correspondence off until we get more information back from our insurance company. We're waiting to find out what the proceeds are, and then we're going to be discussing that further, possibly at the meeting later in June. And I believe that they are going to be a delegation on that meeting, if I'm correct. Is that right, Ashley?
Yes, I believe they're looking at the June 22 meeting, but it hasn't been confirmed yet.
This motion is just for the demolition. This is not for what's going to happen in the future. Anyone else wishing to speak on that? Rod, you want to also speak on 6.1? Again, this is just the demolition.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor, could I please ask another question? I just, so usually with correspondence, there's an action. So, like, so you're saying that the delegation could come back in June? Is that right?
It's coming back June 22. I asked that this go with it, so that we're aware that this was there. But we are not at the stage yet of what we're going to do with this. We are, this is just for the demolition.
Okay, all right, so you've answered my question, thank you.
Counselor Rolloman, yes, Counselor Rolloman.
I just wanted to say that I agree with tearing down the washroom at the same time. I think it's a good idea. And I also wanted to mention that when we're rebuilding, we could look at a different site, maybe closer to the sewer lines and save us some money. Because now that the building's burnt down, we don't have to rebuild in the same location. That's all I wanted to mention.
Would that be correct, CEO McNeely?
Madam Mayor, we're looking at a series of potential options. Part of it's going to be motivated by what parameters the insurance company puts on us in terms of a rebuild. We're led to believe they'll be flexible in terms of where it's sited within the property. And so that will be part of that future report to council on the disposition of the building, the reconciliation with the insurance company, and expanded opportunities, looking forward to programming enhancements in Vic Park.
Thank you. So, the motion, which is moved by Counselor Gillespie and sound corrected by Counselor Rolloman, if there's no further questions in regards to the demolition, would you read it, please, Ms. H?
Yes. So, that report number REC-07-2020 be received, and that council authorize staff to proceed to have the Victoria Street washrooms demolished at an estimated cost of $10,000 to be funded from the facilities reserve. So Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Rolloman?
Did you say Victoria Street Washrooms?
Victoria.
I thought you said Park.
Victoria Street Washrooms?
No.
Oh, it does say street, it should say Park.
Victoria Park, okay, I will make that correction to the resolution. So as amended, yep.
White move, yes.
Yes, okay. Counselor Ossner?
Yes.
Counselor McCreary?
Yes.
And Counselor Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have 6.2, which is in regards to the Safe Places Program. And again, Ms. Adney wanted to speak on this?
Yep.
Ms. Adney?
Okay, are we on 6.2 now? I just want to point out that when I'm switched to different rooms, I'm actually disconnected from your meeting for moments. So, I don't really know what's going on. Anyways, 6.2, I wondered about item 3.3 and item 3.5 within item 6.2, about changing the use of the Air Community Centre parking lot and Schmidt Park. What my question is, is will the township consider installing temporary basketball nets?
Madam Mayor, through to Mrs. Adney, this report does not speak to any physical additions in terms of permanent or semi-permanent facilities, such as the basketball nets. When I look at Schmidt Park as an example, next door at Cedar Creek Public School, there are basketball nets on their hardtop, adjacent to their building. As it relates to the Air Community Centre, no, we're not proposing to put basketball nets in that space. It's meant more for pickup or unorganized play or programming opportunities.
Any other questions on that? I believe Counselor Ossner had a question for 6.2.
Yes, I did, thank you, Mayor. So, I have two questions. One of them was first, the, I think it's 3.2, the Gibson Street Parking Lot. Is it, are they not using that for the construction? Like, did we not pass a resolution allowing them to use the whole one side, I guess you could say, of that Gibson Street Parking Lot? So, how's that gonna work with what we're talking about doing?
So, Madam Mayor, through to Counselor Ossner, you're quite correct. At our meeting, I believe the last meeting, council was agreeable to make the equivalent of 15 car park spaces available for the trades and personnel of Reed's Heritage Home associated with their condo development at the end of Gibson Street. What staff is proposing is that we would be closing one half of the parking lot at 6:00 PM on Fridays through to 7:00 PM on Sundays. So there's typically not much construction activity occurring through the weekend period. We note that normally on weekends, the demand for parking in the parking lot drops. And so this is an opportunity through the weekend period to provide a portion of the hardtop area for informal leisure and recreation pursuits. So through the business week, the parking lot in its entirety would be open.
So then, is that the same timeline's gonna be for all these different options?
No, they vary from site to site based upon their adjacencies. So for example, the parking lot at Schmidt Park, we are only looking at closure during the summer months and returning to a full parking lot, starting right after the Labor Day weekend, because we're working on the premise that there'll be a meaningful school year commencing right after that holiday. So each site is varied depending upon some of their realities in terms of what's adjacent to them. This park, or this parking lot, we're suggesting would be, have that partial closure on weekends through to the end of the Thanksgiving weekend.
Okay, so then, is it gonna be the same for the West Parking Lot of the ACC?
So, let me just pull up the ACC.
Because, didn't, aren't we telling construction workers to park their vehicles there?
So, they're using the East Parking Lot for the parking of their vehicles. And that's where their trades have been parking. They've been using the East, and that's why we specifically identified the West Parking Lot. So for the ACC, we've recommended that the closure be through to the end of Labor Day weekend.
Okay, and I guess my last question, because it's the same thing with Schmidt Park, why we need to close that parking lot? Because we've got such large area there anyway. So, like, are we having a lot of activity of groups wanting to run some sort of, like, basketball or road hockey or something like that in these areas? Is this the whole idea of doing this?
So the premise behind this is, by making the space available, by promoting that it's available, it is to allow the adjacent neighborhood then to utilize it in some form or capacity for activities that work better on a hard surface versus a grass surface. Well, rollerblading, maybe pickup road hockey games, could be hopscotch. It could be whatever in those veins. But it's by creating the dedicated space and then communicating and engaging through our various mediums, the availability of these spaces. The hope is that people will get outside and use some of these assets and leverage them through the summer or early fall time period.
Okay, so then, how are we going to make sure that we're following line with the provincial mandate of group get-togethers? If we're promoting closing these parking lots off, so groups can use it to play road hockey in that?
So it's no different than currently, as it relates to any of the green space within our respective parks. There would be signage that would talk about the two-meter social gathering, social distancing, wash your hands frequently, and also, we've just now, today, received acknowledgement that the province is allowing up to 10 persons for social gathering thresholds, which goes into effect on Friday. So that kind of messaging would be put in signage, and we've identified that as one of our costs as we move forward. And if in the coming weeks, there's further adjustments from the province of Ontario, then the signage would have to be updated accordingly to reflect whatever that new information is.
Okay, that was pretty much it. It was my concern is, closing things to promote group activities, I didn't think that that is something we should be adding to the confusion of how many people can get together and that. I had a little concern about doing this due to the fact that it's almost like we're promoting groups to get together. So that was my only concern with this.
Counselor Gillespie, you want to speak on this as well?
Well, I was a little confused about this because I think playing on a hot pavement in the summertime is kind of crazy. You say to your kid, "Go out and play in the parking lot." I personally just don't get it, and I think we're gonna spend a lot of money on signs because things are changing so fast. You could put a sign up today, it's gonna be no good tomorrow. Now, I agree that garbage cans need to be put around because apparently everybody is throwing this garbage everywhere. I agree with that, but I just kind of, I don't really agree with closing most of these parking lots and putting up all these signs. Because I don't know how well they'll be used.
Are there any other comments?
I have one.
Counselor Ossner?
I wasn't so, I understand your concern, Pam, but I mean, if you look in the cities and that, unfortunately, sometimes that's all the kids have to play on. So, my biggest concern was sending a clear message, not a confusing message, because I didn't want people start to say, "Oh, well, you know, if we didn't have this many people together, why did you open this up for us to do this?" And I was just worried that that was gonna happen. But, I mean, I agree that we should have somewhere for them, for kids to play. I just didn't realize we needed to close all these parks down and put barriers in every park and municipal building that we own because we needed to close off sections. Because as Counselor Gillespie said, all these extra barriers and all this extra work costs extra money too. And I didn't know whether we needed all of that many places for the kids to play.
If I may, Counselors, really good point, good discussion. I agree with a lot that's said, but I also see the need for children and youth to interact. And younger-than-me people. Having a flat surface and for ball hockey or basketball or kicking a soccer ball back and forth or whatever, while you do that on grass surface. But I understand that. I also understand it has to be barricaded off in a parking lot. Otherwise, you get your trick mixing youth or people with vehicles, and it's not a good situation whenever you put those two together. Counselor McCreary?
I do agree with what Counselor Gillespie is saying about wondering what the need might be for these parking lots to be closed, but I think that children can be quite creative, and we might be surprised at what they come up with when they have the surface available to them. So, I think we should give it a try.
Okay, so are we ready for the motion to be read? If so, I believe it's moved by, oh, Ms. Adney, I don't think you get to speak again, I'm sorry. But, so it's moved by Counselor McCreary and seconded by Counselor Ossner. And would you read the motion, please, Ashley?
Yes, so that council receives CAO Report 11-2020, and that staff be directed to initiate the Safe Places Program Phase 1, and that staff prepare a bylaw for consideration at the June 22, 2020 Regular Council Meeting to amend the township's traffic and parking bylaw to facilitate one-way traffic southbound as a temporary measure until October 13, 2020, on Rose Street from the Northern Driveway at Victoria Park through to Water Street, and that staff return in October 20 with a follow-up report on the Phase 1 program as part of the evaluation of the initiative and recommendations for 2021. So Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Rolloman?
Yes.
Counselor Ossner?
Yes.
Counselor McCreary?
Yes.
And Counselor Gillespie?
Yes.
Sorry, that was yes, Counselor.
I agree with the Rose thing, I still don't agree with the parking lot, but anyway.
So that motion is carried.
Thank you.
We should have percentage rest, yeses.
Well, actually, you know what, I'd say to my regional counselors, when we're voting, if you disagree with me, don't vote because you don't want to hurt my feelings. Vote for what you think is right, because you got elected not by me, but by your constituents. So vote what you truly believe to be right, all the time. End of lecture, folks, we're on to the next one, which is 6.4, correct? Now, I'm gonna let CEO McNeely speak first, because I believe there was some minor adjustment thing. Could we bring Ms. Adney in so she can hear CEO McNeely, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there was an error in the report, and it's on the financial implications page. In the closing paragraph of Section 4, Counselor McCreary has quite correct. Councilor McCreary has quite correctly identified and brought to my attention late this afternoon that there is an error in that closing paragraph. The $31,824 that was in the approved 2020 capital budget was funded through the tax levy. It was not a reserve transfer. So if council chooses not to move forward with the project and basically turns down the tender document, then the funds would essentially represent an underspend as part of the 2020 budget. If council wishes to protect these funds and reutilize them in 2021 as part of the future budget deliberations associated with the rehabilitation of the gazebo structure at Victoria Park, then by resolution, council would have to actually transfer, transfer these funds to the reserve account and earmark it for the gazebo structure at Victoria Park.
Thank you for clarification, CEO McNeely. I would like to state that I made an error in 6.2 in that I did not let Ms. Adney speak on it regards to 3.2 or 6.2, which she wishes to do. So if we could please allow her to speak on 3.2 or 6.2, please.
Okay, sorry about that. Actually, it isn't especially important. Going back to 3.4 about blocking, blocking traffic in Victoria Park. I simply wanted to comment that this was an item that has been raised by the readership to closing the Ring Road, especially during the pandemic and even especially on weekends because there are so many more people out walking and they're joshling with social drivers going through the Victoria Park. That's all I was going to say.
Thank you, Ms. Adney. You also get to speak on 6.4 now. Did you hear CEO McNeely's clarification in regards to the finances?
I heard the end of it. I think it's because I'm, I'm missing the meeting when I'm going back and forth to the waiting room. But I think what I heard was that the $31,000 will go back as a part of the capital operating budget. Is that what I heard? That's all I heard.
Clarify, clarify, please, CEO McNeely.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is an error in Section 4 of the staff report, Financial Implications. The present text of the report says the $31,824 would be returned to a reserve account for utilization for future capital provision. That is an error. $31,824 was actually tax levy as part of the approved 2020 budget. And so if council does not award the RFP document, then that $31,824 represents an underspend in the 2020 budget. If council wishes to protect these funds for the Victoria Park gazebo project in 2021, it would actually require a resolution of council transfer the funds to a reserve account and earmark it for this project.
Okay, Ms. Adney, any other questions on 6.4?
Yes, I was wondering in the provisions for the rehabilitation of the Victoria Park gazebo, does it have to be accessible?
So Madam Mayor, through to Ms. Adney. No, it does not require to be accessible as per legislation because it's an existing building. That said, it is an objective to make all of our buildings or structures accessible. This was meant to protect the building and restore those areas that are in need. Your hope was that as part of the, either the provincial or the federal government budgets, which has been present in past years, was accessibility funding to renovate or modify municipal buildings. We received a similar grant here at the NDCC. And our hope was that a parallel program would be available and allow us to do the same at the gazebo at Victoria Park.
Go ahead, Ms. Adney.
Thank you. Would you, would the township ever consider the rehabilitation of the gazebo to be a town hall item? Or if someone has ideas, should they come as a delegation?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, if I could, I'm sorry, Irene, I did not understand your question.
She was asking if the gazebo could be used as a potential town hall. And okay, let's, I mean, clarify.
Sorry, sorry about that. Yes, Derek's got it. I was wondering about public input on the future use of the Victoria Park. Now, I knew it as a band shell, but on the future use.
So you're talking about the go-forward vision for the gazebo structure itself?
That's right.
If council provides that direction, then we would have that engagement process.
Are there any other comments? Council McCreary?
I'm wondering if that gazebo might be considered a heritage asset under the Heritage Act. Maybe if we were to designate it, then it could be eligible for some funding.
CEO McNeely?
So Madam Mayor, through to Council McCreary. Today, that building is not designated under Part 4 of the Ontario Heritage Act. I apologize, I don't know the era in which it was constructed or the genesis from a community perspective as to what led to its original construction. But certainly, on the surface, given some of the elements in the building, it may very well be worthy of such recognition. Certainly, a little bit more research would inform that aspect.
Council McCreary?
I also think that when the washroom is torn down and the concession booth is gone and if a new building were to go up and it would go farther away from the gazebo position in a different place, it could actually make the gazebo look a lot better and highlight the gazebo. So we could make that whole area look a lot nicer, I think so. And having some extra funding through a grant, maybe to, to play up the heritage features of that gazebo could be quite nice.
So I think we have a lot of options we can look at and I'm sure CEO McNeely will look into all of those and get back to us as well as suggestions from the public. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? If not, I believe it's moved by Council Rollman and seconded by Council Gillespie. And if you would like to read the motion, you say?
So the resolution, as outlined in the staff report, is that council receive REC report number 07-2020 and that council reject the bids submitted through ND-RFP-13-2020 to complete the rehabilitation of the gazebo structure in Victoria Park due to significant variance from the 2020 budget allocation to complete the project. And that staff be directed to scope the bid document to clarify the nature and extent of the rehabilitation work proposed and to issue a revised bid document in the fall of 2020 to inform the 2021 capital budget program. So Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council Rollman?
The CEO had his hand up about something.
Oh, sorry, CEO McNeely?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may, so I guess my question is recognizing the error in the report. If council wishes to earmark these funds so that it can be utilized as part of the capital campaign in 2021, then we would actually have to add a recommendation four, which would be to transfer the $31,824 to a reserve account for the proposed rehabilitation of the gazebo structure at Victoria Park.
So CEO McNeely, I'm going to write this down, so, and that $31,824?
Be directed to a reserve account for the future rehabilitation of the Victoria Park gazebo. Now, if council were to add that, it would move those monies over and protect them for the longer term. If council does not wish to set up that specific reserve account, then the funds would stay within the operating budget and would represent an underspend in 2020 fiscal year and would be used to offset overages or pressure points elsewhere in the, in the operating budget that may be incurred in the past or in the coming weeks as we move to year end. So council direction, if you don't want to earmark those funds, then you just recommend the, you adopt the resolution as presented. But if you want to protect
Ladies? Ms. Dethel?
I would recommend that at this time you move that money into the reserve. If you find out at the end of the year that we are in a deficit position, I will definitely bring it back as a recommendation to move it back out of the reserve at that time. It's just if we are in the middle of discussions about it right now, you're better to move it at this point.
Any other comments, councilors?
I agree. Oh, yeah, move it.
Okay, so would you please read the motion and I'll read the add-on, Ashley? Oh, did you write it down as well?
I did get something, yes, I do have it drafted, so if council is okay with it. So it's moved by Council Rollman and seconded by Council Gillespie. The council receive REC report number 07-2020 and that council, and that council reject the bids submitted through ND-RFP-13-2020 to complete the rehabilitation of the gazebo structure in Victoria Park due to significant variance from the 2020 budget allocation to complete the project. And that staff be directed to scope the bid document to clarify the nature and extent of rehabilitation work proposed and to issue revised bid document in the fall of 2020 to inform the 2021 capital budget program. And that council direct staff to transfer $31,824 to a reserve account for the future rehabilitation of the gazebo at Victoria Park. If that's fine, right? So Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council Rollman?
Yes.
Council Ossner?
Yes.
Council McCreary?
Yes.
And Councilor Gillespie?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Governance and Protective Services. It's 7.1 Animal-Dog Bylaw Update. Would you like to elaborate on this, CEO McNeely?
Actually, if I could, I'm going to let Ms. Sage speak to it.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, so this bylaw was a complete rewrite from the current bylaw that we have. So just kind of go over some of the highlights of the report. We are recommending, currently, the bylaw speaks to two dogs per household in residential areas and then three dogs in agricultural and then, of course, unless you have a kennel license. So staff, we did some research throughout Waterloo region and in the area, as well as we've consulted with our, our animal control external contractor, which is KW Humane Society. And they're recommending we change it to three dogs township-wide and that would be more in keeping with the area. And that's a typical requirement in most municipalities. So that recommendation is coming forward in this report. The report also speaks to a number of updates in terms of just conditions, in terms of we've expanded the conditionings, the conditions of kennels. We've reviewed the kennel license process. Currently, and again, this is township, not township, municipal wide. But municipalities typically, when you come and license your dog, you are required to show proof of rabies, proof of breed, that kind of documentation. So that's something we aren't currently doing because our bylaw doesn't speak to it. So we've expanded that as well to be more in keeping with a general requirement that most municipalities ask for. And again, that would ensure more safe, safety for the dog owners as well as the public. The bylaw as well. Oh, yes.
Before you move on to the next vote, are you saying that when they register the dog for the first time or every year?
So the proposed, proposed in the, in the, sorry, in the bylaw is that they would be able, they'd be required to provide all that documentation the first time. But then after that, on an annual basis, on an annual basis, they would only be required to show proof of rabies vaccination. So that would be on an ongoing, and that would be a yearly requirement for them to show.
Okay, and right now, is, is it, is it a bylaw that they have to have rabies vaccination every year? Like, the rabies vaccination only lasts one year?
Currently, currently, our bylaw doesn't require it, no. So that's definitely, it was an update that we've made to this bylaw.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm, I'm saying, are, are you saying to them that they have to get vaccination rabies shots every year in order to get a dog license?
Yeah, for them to be able to renew it, yes. For them to come and renew their dog tag with the township, yes.
And I don't know enough about vaccinations, but I didn't realize that vaccinations are done every year. I thought they were done every so many years.
Ms. Dethel?
So there used to be annual that you would get those rabies shot and some that still do it, but some that's actually have the three-year shots that you can get.
Okay, so why would we? Do we need to amend it to state that show notification of rabies shot? And if it's a three-year, it's marked off for three years? Ms. Sage?
Currently, the bylaw, how it's, how the proposed bylaws currently written, we require rabies, proof of rabies vaccination every year. And that's a common requirement for most municipalities.
But that conflicts with what's going on today. Mr. Ossner and then Council Ossner, then Council Gillespie. Council Rollman, did you have your hand up?
No, it's okay.
So then maybe can, can we clarify that if they show us proof of vaccination and they come to get their dog tag, is there, do, does staff have the means to photocopy that to have that on file for the next three years? Or do the people just bring it back every year for the next three years?
Yes, so there is a requirement every year and the bylaw does speak to record keeping. So the township does have that ability to be able to make copies for our own records.
Okay, so then, just playing devil's advocate, if somebody has vaccination records for three years, why not give them a dog tag license for three years?
I'm going to ask Ms. Dethel.
Okay, so we need to register the dogs annually so that we know how many dogs there are. What we've had in the past is there have been situations where people have added dogs. So if they come in and they get their tags every year, then we're ensuring that we've got the proper number of dogs that are registered in the house. We're ensuring that they have got their rabies shot that is up to date. So it needs to be an annual. We also, there's a license. We use the revenue to assist us to offset the costs that we have for our pound control.
And Pat, Councilor Gillespie?
I was just wondering who is going to enforce all this? Because do people, I'm sure some people do not come in and get tags. So how, is there some kind of enforcement on this?
Yeah, so if dogs are found running at large or not on their property, like our animal control office officers, they respond to dogs off-leash. And if they do find dogs that don't, aren't licensed, then they require them to pay for a license.
CEO McNeely?
So I just want to reinforce a couple of things. So maybe the language we've spaded of vaccination should be modified to saying valid rabies certification. So whether it's one year or three years, if it's within that period of time, then it's valid. The other is the, the number of dogs by owner can vary from year to year. People can move. And so if they move after year one, they forfeit notionally two years' worth of expense if they move to another jurisdiction. The other is unfortunately, animals like us have a life expectancy and there could be a death of a dog partway through that three-year life. And once again, people would forfeit those expenses. And as Madam Treasurer has identified, we use the annual revenue from the dog licenses to offset the delivery of services by our external contractor, the KW Humane Society. And so with that in and out, transfer of revenue in, expense out, basically, we're able to provide animal control services at a break-even proposition. Whereas if we take all the money in, let's say for three years in the first year, then we could have a blip as a positive revenue and obviously shortfalls in years two and three as it relates to the overhead expense. as it relates to the overhead expense.
Council Gillespie, I think I cut you off. Did you have any more to say?
Well, I just think if you're going to make all these rules, you need to kind of enforce them. And I'm sure people have dogs that are just at their house and no one knows. So does anyone ever go around and check for dogs or?
We actually did one year. We hired students to go out throughout the university students, they were hired in the student program. They started in May and they went around throughout the summer to the fall knocking on doors, and of course, dogs bark, so they know that there's dogs there. So they would hand them the tag and mark down that which house the dogs were at. We did that for a couple of years, and it was very successful. Most profit from dog tag sales was done during that time. Any other comments? Council McCreary?
Um, I've got things I'd like to clarify about the bylaw. Under Domestic Animal Welfare, that section six, for instance, paragraph A, it starts to talk about crowded conditions, too many animals, et cetera. Is that meant to apply only to dogs? Or could this bylaw potentially apply to cats? Because six A refers to domestic animals. Is the intention for this to apply to any animal other than a dog? What if somebody had 27 hamsters in their house or 500 cats or something?
So this bylaw only speaks to dogs. We don't license cats, so that's not included. Cats are not part of this bylaw, so yeah, this bylaw speaks strictly to dogs.
Okay, so, well, how would we deal with the situation where somebody was keeping cats in under, over crowded circumstances? There's some other law that would come into effect if we don't have a bylaw?
Yeah, there are animal cruelty laws as well that our humane society is able to enforce.
Okay, so it's just, so a domestic, although it starts talking about a domestic animal, you just mean a dog?
Yeah, if you go back, sorry, the definite, where the bylaw lists the definitions and it does say domestic, domestic is then defined as domestic meaning dog.
Just a dog.
It does, yeah, so this bylaw is only for dogs.
Okay, um, also, under Domestic Animal Welfare, paragraph H, I found the wording there very confusing, and I thought maybe it was saying something other than what was intended. So I was thinking it should be changed to, no person shall allow a domestic animal to be in the portion of a moving motor vehicle that is not enclosed and would be deemed dangerous to the animal. The way it's currently worded, it's almost like a double negative, so it sounds like you're, you're required to have your dog in a dangerous situation? So it's 6.1, paragraph H.
Can we make that adjustment?
Yeah, so we're not recommending that the bylaw be approved tonight. So that's definitely something, when we bring it back at the June 22 meeting, we can look at clarifying that language, so it's a little bit clearer.
Yeah, so, and one more thing, and I'm not sure if this is, this is the time when we would talk about this, or maybe this should be under, when we look at our fees schedule. But I note that seniors or 65 and over get a 50% reduction in their fee if it's paid in person, and the dog tags can be purchased at the Air Animal Hospital. The Air Animal Hospital is the only veterinary clinic that's operating in North Dunfermline, that's Dr. Dust. And she noted to me that she found this idea that the seniors had to actually come into the township office to get the 50% discount, sort of an onerous burden on the seniors. And she wondered why that was necessary, and if, if they were at the Air Animal Hospital and they qualified for the discount, why they couldn't get it there? Is there some reason why we want to keep that there?
Ms. Darrow?
So just a clarification, in the past, it's because they meet, we, the township has needed to identification to prove that they are a senior. We can pass this along to the Air Animal Hospital and ask them if they are taking the purchases there, which actually, they don't, we don't sell a lawful of tags there, but we can give them the same information that it is for seniors if they show appropriate ID. And there is another veterinarian clinic, and that is the Cambridge Vet, which is out on Cedar Creek Road. So we have not traditionally been selling tags out there. And the clerk and I talked about it, and we're going to at least offer that service to another part of the township in case people want to go there to purchase the tags and coming over here. But our takes, you can actually purchase the tags by mailing in the information to us, and now you can pay online. So we're going to try and automate the whole system a little bit better, so people don't actually have to come in person in order to purchase the tags.
Okay. Any other questions? And I believe there is a resolution for this, so. Moved by Council McCreary and seconded by Council Ossner, would you please read that, Ms. Sage?
Or that clerk, that CL-10-2020 be received, and that council enact bylaw 3160-20 being a bylaw to regulate dogs in licensed dog kennels, and to repeal bylaw, bylaws 1286-90, 1294-91, and 2255-07, and that council approve the Dog Designation Appeal Committee Terms of Reference as attached to this report. So Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Can I ask for clarification? So you said we're not passing this bylaw tonight?
Uh, no, and I can add wording, but yes, the idea was that one's going to come back at the June 22 meeting, and then council can adopt the bylaw at that meeting.
So this is just repealing the past bylaw, correct?
Yes, this would be giving us authorization to move forward with passing this bylaw and then repealing the previous ones. And then council will formally adopt the bylaw in first, second, and third reading at the June 22 meeting.
Okay, and I'll vote yes.
Okay, Council Roman?
So we're voting yes on the first, first reading, is that what this is?
No.
No, this is the staff recommendation.
So we're voting yes on the recommendation, we can still make changes when we do the first, second, and third reading in the next meeting. We can also check at that meeting if the changes we discussed tonight were implemented in the bylaw.
Okay, all right, I'll vote yes.
Council Ossner?
Okay, so just for clarification, this is committee of the whole meeting. We're just passing recommendations to go to council in two weeks. I vote yes.
And Council Ossner, sorry, how did you vote?
Yes.
Sorry, that was yes?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. Council McCreary?
I vote yes, provided you're going to come back with some revised wording for paragraph H.
And Council Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried.
Okay. Next, we have up. We have the next one is moved by Council Gillespie and seconded by Council Roman, that council adopt the recommendations that adopted and presented by the committee of call dated June 8, 2020.
So yes, so I want to just clarify, this is for the recommendations for report number FIN-13-2020 and report rec-07-2020 only. Okay, so that council adopt those recommendations as presented. So Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council Roman?
Yes.
Council Ossner?
Yes.
Council McCreary?
Yes.
And Council Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried.
And next on the agenda, we have the correspondence from Gigi Warner in regards to holding a prom parade for the 2020 graduates at Victoria Park Air. Any comments, questions? Council Ossner?
One quick question, obviously, this is going to happen before we start close, all the closures, right?
Yes.
Correct. All right, so the motion is moved by Council McCreary and seconded by Council Ossner, would you like to read it, please?
Certainly, that the correspondence received from Gigi Werner requesting permission to hold a prom parade for the 2020 graduates at Victoria Park be received, and that council direct staff to make any necessary arrangements and/or grant the required approvals to allow for a prom parade to be held at Victoria Park Air on Saturday, June 20, 2020, from 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM. Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council Roman?
Yes.
Council Ossner?
Yes.
Council McCreary?
Yes.
And Council Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried.
And the next one we have is the correspondence, moved by Council Gillespie and seconded by Council Roman, that the correspondence received from Michael Stump regarding traffic and speed on Northumberland Street be received, and that council direct staff to send a request to the region of Waterloo to undertake a speed study and the operational review to address concerns related to traffic and speeding along Northumberland Street from Greenfield Road West South to Stanley Street.
Okay, and how do you vote on that, Mayor Foxton?
Yes.
Council Roman?
Yes.
Council Ossner?
Yes.
Council McCreary?
Yes.
And Council Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried.
And the next one we have is in regards to Brad Smith requesting the lights at the tennis courts at Victoria Park Air, the information be received and staff direct to fair report for the July 13, 2020 council meeting as a follow-up for review of the consideration. This is the one where he wants the lights to stay on at the tennis courts till 11 o'clock. Council Ossner and then CEO McNally?
Yeah, so we used to play a lot of tennis, we were in the tennis club and everything. We always had the lights available to us to 11 o'clock. Did, did we change this, or?
We, go ahead, CEO McNally.
So in 2018, council amended the park's bylaw and restricted park usage till 9:00 PM. And so that captured, in this case, the tennis facility park. But in the here and now, we have a little bit of an issue. There are, there is no power going to Victoria Park Tennis Court because with the structure fire, the hydro feed to the tennis court was disrupted. And so depending upon what council does with some building movements and things like that, it will affect power supply to the tennis courts as it go forward. So that's why it's tied into that June, that later June report because depending upon which route we go, will affect hydro supply.
Any other questions or comments? So I can ask, this is moved by Council Roman and seconded by Council Gillespie, and if you'd read it, please, Ms. Sage?
Certainly, that the correspondence received from Brad Smith regarding the lights on the tennis courts at Victoria Park Air be received, and that council direct staff to prepare a report for the July 13, 2020 council meeting as a follow-up for review and consideration. Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council Roman?
Yes.
Council Ossner?
Yes.
Council McCreary?
Yes.
And Council Gillespie?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you. The next one is moved by Council Ossner and seconded by Council McCreary. The correspondence received from Mary Schmidt requesting permission to hold a drive-by graduation ceremony in the parking lot at Schmidt Park be received, and that council direct staff to make all necessary arrangements and/or grant the required approvals to allow for the drive-by graduation ceremony hosted by Cedar Creek Public School on Wednesday, June 24, 2020, between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:30 PM. Are there any questions or comments? CEO McNally?
Okay, Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council Roman?
Yes.
Council Ossner?
Yes.
Council McCreary?
Yes.
And Council Gillespie?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you. I think this is good things, this is the start of a new normal. And the quicker we start to move into these things in a positive way, the better it is for our society. Okay, so I thank you for supporting those. Next, we have moved by Council Roman and seconded by Council Gillespie. And the bylaw, do you want to carry on, please, Ms. Sage?
Certainly, so moved by Council Roman and seconded by Council Gillespie, that bylaw number 3165-20 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of committee of the whole on June 8, 2020, be read a first, second, and third time, and be finally passed, signed, and sealed by the mayor and clerk. So Mayor Foxton?
Yes.
Council Roman?
Yes.
Council Ossner?
Yes.
Council McCreary?
Yes.
And Council Gillespie?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
And next move by Council Gillespie and seconded by Council Roman, and it's, carry on the clerk, please.
That whereas business before this committee of the whole meeting has been completed at 7:02 PM, and be it resolved that this meeting adjourns, it meets again on June 22, 2020. Mayor Foxton, how do you vote?
One moment, please, Council Ossner, you have your hand up.
Ashley, I sent an email to add to the agenda. I had a question about the Ingle Street sidewalks, is that, we're going to do that after?
I had added, if you, I can add it to the June 22 because there's an area on the agenda for counselor reports.
Okay.
And so that way you can speak to it at that, on that, on that item, if that works for you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, sorry, Mayor Foxton?
Yes.
Council Roman?
Yes.
Council Ossner?
Yes.
Council McCreary?
Yes.
And Council Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is carried, and we are adjourned.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Have a great night, everyone.
Yeah, you too.
Bye.
Bye.
And have a good night.
You too.
Andrew, did you get the invite for?